So I call to order tonight's subcommittee of the school committee negotiating team with the TTA and ESPs and teachers at 4:33 PM. At this time, could we all, I know you just sat, I'm sorry, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. It's in a hot spot, but in the back of the room.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then for purpose of logistics, the January 4th, 2023 negotiating subcommittee meeting will be televised and recorded. It may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or on youtube.com/tuxburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anybody is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. See, nobody, we have Tuxbury Telemedia here with us. And please bear with me because this is definitely a different type of a meeting for me, so I'll do my best. A couple of things, I said some things at the last meeting, the closed meeting, so I just feel it's important, I want to kind of say the same things again, which is, you know, we're committed to open on a dialogue. Our goal, as is, I'm sure everybody here, is to reach a mutually beneficial agreement that, you know, is best for students and the students are always first. So we're here, we're listening, and in the best spirit possible, so I hope things go well for us. And I'm going to turn it over to Roseanne. I am Bridget Barabedian. Rich Russo is also here with the school committee. We have Brenda Terry Oregan, our superintendent, Laura McDermott, the assistant superintendent. Next is our town manager, Richard Montori, Dave Libby, our business manager, and this is Roseanne DePietro, our legal counsel. There's a sign-in sheet that's making its way, I think, through your area. We've signed our sheet, so we'll just make copies for each other and share them at some point. I think that the last, I don't mean to jump right in or jump on your presentation, but I think what we had planned on is for you to finish presenting proposals in common that the TTA has. And after that, the committee folks may have some questions, and then we're going to then break into the ESP negotiations, and then after that, we'll break into teacher negotiations. We just want to let you know ahead of time that tonight, the committee's prepared to present the majority of its ESP proposals when we break. We might have one or two more next session for ESPs, and then the next session, we'll have focused primarily on teachers and have all of our teacher proposals.
Excellent.
All right.
Okay, so would you like us to go right off where we started then? Excellent. Yes, we have more copies for people asylum representatives on your end. So while Ted is passing the cell, I'll just kind of reorient everybody. We started off last meeting with common proposals. These are proposals that are shared between the ESPs and the teachers. This language either was existent but different in both contracts, or one was non-existent in one and the other, or they were language we are asking to improve. So just to summarize our last meeting, and we're not going to, I'm not going to spend too much time on this, we presented new language about ending subcontracting, such as subcontracting our aides along with psychologists, so that way they're employed by union members, as we feel this is best for student learning. We also proposed assault protection language that is ramped up for both units for if a child or anybody else assaults one of our members. And we presented parental leave, which would be 12 weeks paid by the district and then up to 180 days of sick leave to be used for any parent, non-birthing or birthing. I assume you want us to go through everything. I assume there's no responses yet at all. You're just waiting for us to go through everything, correct?
Right, we're going to wait until, if you don't mind, until you present, and then we may go through our responses as a whole.
Excellent, okay. So then we'll go on to our next one, which we have not talked about yet, and that is bereavement. And I'll, as you can see, everybody, we have the current language in the unit A. Unit A is teachers, and unit B is ESPs. And the bottom one is the language we want identical between two, both contracts. So I'll read this aloud for you all. "Five days not to be deducted from sick or personal leave shall be granted in the event of the death of a member of a unit member's family. Such examples as father, mother, son, daughter, stepparent, spouse, grandparent, grandchild, mother-in-law, father-in-law, daughter-in-law, son-in-law, in the event of a miscarriage, or any member living in the immediate household, any person the unit member legally is responsible for, or any other person approved by the superintendent. And then two days of bereavement will be allowed for the death of another close relative or friend not to be deducted from sick or personal leave." It's as simple as this, we want to make sure all family members of any given member, families look different for different people, we want to make sure that they have time to grieve and prepare for services. We also notably added miscarriage, as miscarriages obviously are traumatic for anyone, and that is grieving a loss also, and there may also be medical appointments and such to be caught up for our members. That, it's just as simple as, it's just a way to make sure we know we have some sort of leave for losing anybody in our family, and to make sure we understand the full scope of what a family is, along with the grieving of even another close relative for two days. And that is that, that's simply put right there. So moving on to the, unless there's any questions from anyone on your side about that one? Okay, we'll move on to our next proposal, which is half-sick days. The new language, and I'm going to pass this over to Josh Beledo in a second, but I'll read the language first. For unit A, "All requests for sick leave will be made via Frontline or the current relevant system under the following terms and conditions. Sick leave may be used in half-day increments in the event of bargaining unit employee incurs an absence of .5 or less of their contracted workday." And then for unit B, "All requests for sick leave will be made via Frontline under the following conditions. Sick leave may be used in half-day increments in the event of bargaining unit employee incurs an absence of .5 or less of their contractual day." And Josh will explain that rationale.
So really, I've kind of narrowed it down to eight points that I want to bring up for this, and I'll be speedy. Enhanced flexibility for staff. Half-sick days offer greater flexibility for educators and aides. Can be particularly valuable for short-term illnesses or appointments, reducing the need for taking a full day off. Improved morale and job satisfaction. The ability to take half-sick days can lead to increased job satisfaction. Employees who feel that their needs are being met are more likely to be engaged and committed to their work. Reduced absenteeism and improved continuity. Allowing half-sick days would allow staff, or staff are less likely to take a full day off for minor illnesses or appointments. This can lead to reduced overall absenteeism and better continuity in the classroom, which is beneficial to student learning. Cost efficiency, there's a potential that this could be more cost efficient. When educators or aides take only the time they need, the district saves on substitute teacher costs. The way I envisioned it is, if you had, let's say, two staff members, one taking half in the morning, one in the afternoon, you could almost double up on the sub. Alignment with best practices, many organizations and other school districts either offer half-sick days or are moving in that direction. Positive impact on student learning, the consistency that I brought up earlier could be beneficial. Teachers in the classroom is a good thing. Health and safety, it allows staff to adequately address their health needs without the pressure of taking a full day off, whether that be an appointment or something else. And then a work-life integration, so I would say this policy is a step towards a better work-life rhythm, which is increasingly valued in this modern workforce.
And I will now hand to Emily Niles, just to make another rationale for that before we move on.
Just in terms of being able to come into the school day, like sometimes you don't feel great coming in, right? But we all know, we come in, we get up, we come in, it's harder sometimes to be up than in. And there's been times in the past where I was told, well, the problem with you coming in and trying and then leaving is that then we don't have a sub available. So it's hard, right? We want to come in, we want to be there, but if we had the ability to leave with a half-sick day, it would just make things a little more succinct, I think, for everybody.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions about that proposal at all? Okay. Our next one is sick leave. I'll read the new language that's shared commonly between unit A and unit B. "For the purposes of this article, the term family shall be defined as meaning father, mother, son, daughter, stepparent, spouse, grandparent, grandchild, and/or other individuals for whom the unit member has medical responsibility. The superintendent may approve any other person who may not fall into any of the above categories." Emily Niles, explain that rationale.
So some of the changes is more or less like cleanup of things, just like shuffling the deck together so they make sense, but in an attempt to also recognize the changing way that families look, as well as personally, too. My family like rallies together to take care of my grandparents. Like we all take nut shifts, but like appointments, times to go help them out, things like that. And sometimes it might be your turn, or sometimes you might need to stay with them, whether it's temporary, maybe you need to move in for a little bit. And so defining, adding grandparent in and adding stepparents in better defines what families look like, and it makes it more realistic that then families can support their own within themselves.
Any questions on that proposal at all? All right, and the last one, to end this common proposal portion of the meeting. Regarding assignment, the new language we propose for both members, or both units, rather, is by the earlier or either June 15th or the last day of school, all unit members will receive a letter of assignment for the following school year that will include building assignment, role assignment, and salary. Each bargaining unit member will return this letter prior to June 30th of the same school year. Administration will maintain this assignment the following school year. I'm going to speak on the rationale with the teachers, and Diana's going to briefly speak on the rationale with the ESPs. There have been moments where in August, members find out last minute that they are not teaching the same grade level, they may not even be assigned to the same building that they thought they were assigned to on June 15th. I do want to say the practice here with the letters does happen already, we're just memorializing it, but we do want more of a binding agreement. We obviously understand that student numbers fluctuate, absolutely. However, that being said, the livelihood of our educators and the best for student learning is affected when a teacher finds out on August 20th, which was an example that happened two years ago, that they are moving from one elementary school to another with a whole different curriculum. That doesn't benefit our students, and also for the mentality and livelihood of the member. It really throws a wrench in everything. They need to prepare for a brand-new school year, six days out usually, and we just want to make sure that assignments are kept the same. Diana, would you like to speak about, there you are, would you like to speak about the ESP aspect?
I'm agreeing with your words as an ESP, if you may just deny your. The decision to change the role assignments for the teacher and the students, we all agree that having a meeting in the classroom is beneficial to the teachers and the students. To achieve the best possible performance, it is essential that the ESP is consistently present to the students' daily environment. To ensure that they start each year on a positive note, it is important to meet with the ESP and discuss the assignments to be upcoming after each year. If meeting aims to understand the ESP's strengths in different subject areas, so that they are equipped and managed and reteamed to develop a classroom. From the first case, we develop a strong bond with our students. By getting to know the academic needs for our students, we create a safe and secure environment for them to learn and grow. Our consistent presence in the classroom helps them feel supported and confident in their abilities, and we become a fixture in their daily routine. When the ESP is free assigned to different students, it's a critical building. As soon as they leave behind, we will immediately serve and report to the students. This plan of support includes evidence in terms of their emotional, behavioral, and academic growth. Therefore, it is crucial to have successful assignments for each ESP to ensure that every student receives required support. Thank you.
Are there any questions with that last proposal at all? So that concludes the common proposal aspect of the meeting. Would we, yes?
We may have a few questions at certain points of this.
Absolutely, totally fine.
And that was thinking after, but the .5 sick days, so it does, the new language mentions that the sick leave would be made via Frontline, so, but then it was also, Emily, you're mentioning that you would actually be able to go home sick, so was that, you wouldn't be able to do that through Frontline, right?
You would have to talk to your, if you're showing up to school and you're putting in Frontline an hour before the half-day, you'd have to talk to your principal, yeah, that would be, yeah.
So like on the spot, I think I would go directly and say, I'm not feeling well, but in the past, you got docked your whole day, even if you made it through half the day and then felt sick.
Okay, so you're looking for the option of kind of planning ahead and?
Planning ahead and in that moment, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
But yeah, if there's, if there was happening during the day, that'd be bizarre to not talk to your principal, going home.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions from anyone at all?
If you don't mind, I'll kind of start going through it probably in chronological order, but members of the team, if you have questions, please chime in. So I'll just go from the beginning on the proposal to change the language that's currently in the teacher contract about assault protection. And it looks as though there is a mechanism here for reporting, it's a procedure, but we understand in your language, you want to provide more specifics about timelines and where these go, what's put in the pipeline, totally get that. And there's a meant ability to, putting some efforts in to make it, you know, commitment to live with a timeframe, but allow for exceptions where it's an unusual or convoluted or involved investigation. We do have some questions about the language that you chose in your proposal. For example, the definition of an assault on new language 1B. I'm wondering about the choice of the word intentional, when you say an intentional act. From my understanding, and I don't work here, and I've never worked in a school, full disclosure, I'm wondering how that, how closely that fits to what's going on. We heard last time, we're not going to repeat it because we're in open session, we're all sharing a concern about privacy and dignity of students. I know we all have that interest in mind. From my understanding, there's a situation sometimes where a student's disability manifests itself on occasion in assaultive behaviors, and I just am wondering if we should be more careful to, in any way, suggest that those are intentional acts. So I'm just wondering, like, what, if you could share with us, what are you trying to capture with this definition?
I think we'd be trying to capture an assault is when anyone, right, could, obviously, I hope this would never happen, but it could be someone not a student, right?
Sure.
Does hurt a teacher while, you know, there's a difference between having a workplace injury, falling over, student backing up their chair and hurting someone. There's a difference in that and the intention of hitting to hurt or otherwise losing control. So that would fall under our definition.
Whether or not it's actually a fault, an act of like?
Yeah, so, so, as you can see, the conclusion, we don't want a conclusion that guarantees necessarily like legal blame, right? But we would like the report to show like what remedies can we seek for the safety of that educator, right? Because like you said, there are students who, you know, for whatever reason, while they maybe intentionally did thrash at a teacher or what have you, you know, we can't put language in to guarantee what happens to that student for doing that.
Right, right. So?
So we get, I get what you're saying, right? What is intentional, and we could get into almost the philosophical, right? But our intent here was just to distinguish kind of accidental, right, from?
Yes, like what you said, like unknowingly almost bumping a chair into somebody or something. So do you want to, do you, think about this, you don't have to answer me now, obviously, but I'm wondering if you might consider, instead of saying like an assault, why don't we just use the word injury? Any injury maybe goes through this, and I know when it's a workplace injury that involves like a loss of, you know, day's work or medical expenses, the employer should be filing a report of injury with the comp carrier. But I see what you're saying, you want the individual who's affected by all this to be kept in the loop, right? And there'd be some sort of concrete, here's what happened, here's what we're doing about it. And I think the committee and the administration is on board with that, you know? So just think about, instead of using the word assault, maybe just say, anytime someone sustains an injury, let's put together like a mechanism for when it goes in the pipeline, how it goes in the pipeline, what happens to it, and what happens at the end. I think the committee does not wish to be interested in receiving reports because the school committee itself, the five-member body, has no role in any of that. It's the administration and the day-to-day operations sphere that handles all that. So let's see if we can not have this committee members be involved in that.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Were you finished?
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to highlight that this also encompasses threats as well, not just actual injuries.
Okay. We'll talk about that in caucus, but I think, I think I can, members sitting here with me can understand where you're going with that, so let us talk about that now that you've given us some enlightenment on what you intended, as that was helpful. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
If I could, when you say threats, are you meaning verbal assaults? Is that where you were going with the word?
Somebody, like a threat, I'm going to kill you, you know?
In quotes.
Yeah, or as a threat I got from a student once, "You're not my teacher after school," right? That's a threat, you know, so.
Again, we could have a lot of philosophical, so just to be clear, the, "I would like to hurt you" is not a threat. I'm kidding, in the legal sense, it's not, but I see that a person who's teaching a class, trying to be in control of their classroom, that can be seen as something that needs to get to the administration's attention. So I think that the takeaway is, we can certainly work with you on this, but we may need to tweak some of the, some of the feel of this, some of the vibe, okay? So we'll get back to you on specific counters, if not at this meeting, next.
Roseanne, before we move on, just a couple clarifying questions on my end. So, and I think, I don't think that, yes, there was some language added, because I know that there was already some language in at least the teacher contract coming into this. So specifically in section 1A, so it looks like the way that this is written, that the unit member themselves should report the incident within a reasonable time period. Again, this is assuming an assault, if we take sort of the language as proposed here, as is. And I guess, maybe I'm a little confused, and I'm just trying to understand, because to me, that reporting is what really initiates the investigation, so to speak, at least gets you to section C here, 1C. So I guess, and then we're also putting in here that the administration should have 48 hours to conduct an investigation, interviews, whatever is necessary and required. So I'm trying, I'm trying to just draw the conclusion of why a member needs a reasonable amount of time, but the administration needs simply two workday. I'm assuming that's two workdays anyway.
Yeah, that's a reasonable question. I would say reasonable time for a member could be the processing of what happened to them, right? Maybe, I mean, I don't want to make up scenarios of what could happen to someone, but at the same time, I would, you know, I understand your concern with the timeline on a member's end versus the administration's end. I guess I would say that people process an assault differently. They need time, but at the same time, I could see, you know, unless if they had a very good reason, like why they should, there should be a rather prompt way, but the idea is that the report is the triggering of that timeline. Would you like to add to that?
No, I mean, every circumstance is different, and, you know, we can't envision exactly what would happen, but somebody who's endured some type of traumatic event, you know, it might take them a little longer, so we kind of intentionally, reasonable amount of time seems kind of vague, but it's going to, you know, it's going to depend on the circumstances.
Okay, and then I guess just my last question on this proposal anyway, is in the fifth section, which is again, really a whole new section here. "No bargaining unit member shall suffer a reduction in income that results from a school-related assault," again, as defined above. And, you know, from that standpoint, there's no real disagreement from my standpoint. I guess what I'm trying to understand, though, is that intended to mean in perpetuity, like is there a timeline there? Because, you know, from my standpoint, and again, you know, there's all these extreme scenarios we can all come up with, right? But at the end of the day, you know, the goal is to, you know, if this was to occur, if there was some type of injury or assault that was to occur, obviously, we want the member to, you know, deal with it, process it, obviously, we want the administration to investigate it and conclude on it, and at the end of the day, the goal is hopefully to get that member back in the classroom, doing their job, what they love to do. And so, like, how is, you know, but it could take a member, you know, some time to process all of that. So how is, how is, how should the administration look at this when trying to, you know, consider this language?
So, and I get your concern, right? Let's say somebody, hopefully, this would never happen, and let's say somebody gets a severe injury, right? Is the, is the school district, you know, on the hook to pay this person's salary the next 20 years, right? No, so what would, what would happen if?
I think it's something else.
Eventually, what would happen is such a person would have to, if some, for whatever reason, somebody is incapacitated, they would go through the MTRS disability system. So there are mechanisms in place, so it's not like.
Gosh, as you're describing it, I'm thinking, I hope that never happened or does happen. It's just terrible to contemplate, but yeah, okay, is that, that's really helpful.
That's helpful, thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so the parental leave provision, it's, we see what you're saying here. I think we'll just have to caucus on what this means in terms of, quite frankly, the ability to sustain this kind of a benefit. We understand the societal benefit of promoting, you know, bonding leave with children, and we all understand that the taxpayers do fund the schools, so we have to kind of strike the correct balance. Does anybody have any specific questions about the proposal here? I didn't think that we did, okay.
I had a couple clarifying questions. So, and just trying to understand this, so the 12 weeks in section 1A is proposed, are we saying that that, for up to 12 weeks, is requested by the unit member? I'm assuming the way that this is written, it can be taken in any chunk of time, up to 12 weeks within that year, or is this meant to be consecutive?
We haven't discussed.
We haven't actually, that's a good question. We can talk about that as a caucus, that's a good question, though. I'll write that down, thank you.
Okay, that's fair. And then any, any sick time earned, so now I'm going to section 1B. Any sick time earned can be taken, and if, again, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding this, on top of the 12 weeks, so, so basically, a member could be out a total of basically a whole school year, assuming they had enough accrued, enough sick time, really a whole school year plus the additional 12 weeks from section 1A, at least based on the way this is proposed.
I'm so sorry, I was writing down your last question, I need to repeat that question one more time, all right, all right. My apologies.
Fair enough. So again, just, I just want to make sure I'm following this, because to Roseanne's point, you know, this does have a taxpayer burden here. So in section 1B, what this calls for and allows is a member, if they have accrued enough sick time, and I get it, you know, members that have more seniority are going to have more accrued sick time over some time. So, but what this allows is this, a particular member to take up to a whole school year off, assuming they had that sick time available to them, on top of the 12 weeks within the first year, so essentially, we'll call it 15 months off, in terms of a school year, right? Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that that made sense to me. Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify.
Excellent.
Almost said.
All right. All right, and then we will caucus, and if we don't have an answer today on the bereavement proposal, we definitely have one for you next time. And then the sick day language is similarly, sick leave similarly, and the letter of assignment, I'm not an administrator, but I can see where this language will most likely need some sort of qualification for circumstances that require a last-minute change. I think I'm going to speak for the administrators when I say, all of the things that you espouse, they agree with you. It's best for kids to have consistency of assignment, it's best for kids, clearly. However, there are situations where they just have to make a last-minute change, and that's the reality that we all sort of have to rally to. Am I saying it right, Madam Superintendent?
I would say any last-minute change is determined, and we would want to hear from the administration, is also made in the best interest of students. It's not made willy-nilly. It's not made willy-nilly, it would be made in the best interest of the needs of our students that arise unexpectedly.
And sometimes kids move away. So, you know, you know the drill, and I'm sure they understand, it's, I'm a planner, I'd like to have my schedule a year in advance, really, but sometimes you just have to run with the last-minute change, and it hopefully, you just understand, like, the administration did not want to jam you up, but it just had to be, you know? So, that is gonna definitely probably be a counter to this, but it's gonna have to have some sort of qualifying language that I just verbally laid out to you. Okay?
Roseanne, just another clarifying question. So, and it sounds like, at least the way that it was spoke of, Diane, and I think Connor, I don't know if you did it from the teacher's side, I get the impression, at least from listening to you guys, that that, this is certainly more the exception, not the norm.
That depends on teacher versus, it's much more common in the ESP.
Okay, much more, okay. Okay, fair enough. And, yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, I sort of tie it into the whole paternity-maternity leave, you know, again, it's another extenuating circumstance, right? You know, if that proposal was to, it's like, you know, anything could happen, right? Now, a teacher's on maternity leave for 12 weeks, or whatever it may look like, and we do have to shift things, right? Again, things happen, so, but obviously, we'll caucus and talk more about that. So thanks for the clarity.
Okay.
Would we like to move directly right into the ESP negotiation?
I think that makes most sense, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I will, on our end, we're gonna turn it over to our co-chairs, Joanne and Emily Noel.
I'm the person who talks to myself. Okay. So we have three proposals that are ESP-focused for you today. So I'm just gonna read what they are, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the person who's gonna explain it, because I am not an ESP, and they are better suited for it. So, we're gonna start with some changes to personal day language, so that's Article 8, Section 1. Sorry, I'm doing the maneuvering ahead. This is more cleanup language, oh, sorry. Do you have it? I'm sorry, I'll give it to her. Keep talking. Okay. So, we're trying to clean up things. There's certain language in the ESP contract which just doesn't match reality, because things have changed and the language hasn't been updated, or just for the sake of things being more efficient, it's kind of changed over time. And so the personal day language is one of those. It's more like changing the lettering, not the spirit of. So I'll let Joanne explain that one to everyone.
Thank you. Hi. The only thing we wanted to change on this was, right now, it says that we apply, it doesn't say we apply through frontline, it says we send a letter to the superintendent. So we just wanted to change it to say ESPs will be granted three personal days without loss of pay for personal matters upon the approval of the building principal, because as we understand it, when it goes to frontline, it goes to the building principal now. Such request will be made via the online platform utilized by the district 48 hours in advance, except in emergency situations. So it's really just, as Emily said, a housekeeping.
No, go ahead. Whatever you're comfortable with.
All right. So next up, we want to talk about the ability of ESPs to collaborate with the teachers that they work with. So the ESPs are actually in the grunt of doing all of the services, doing all the, a lot of the day-to-day, hour-to-hour, class-to-class work with students. I can set up a beautiful modified project, but the ESP is the one usually helping them make it through all of those steps. And as a result, it is really valuable for, as a teacher, to get feedback from my ESP. But that cannot happen, because my ESP needs to go with the kid to the next class, or they're scheduled somewhere else, or they have a duty, or they have something to do. And the way the scheduling is right now, unless by a fluke of the scheduling, or some, someone's absent and we end up having five minutes or something, I have zero time to collaborate with the ESP. And the ESP has no time to go to a teacher and say, so-and-so's having a bad day, so when we're here, third block, like, let's do this or that, right? Or, hey, we didn't get as far in this section, can I pull them to do this or that? There's no time to do that. And so we have some language trying to allow for that during the day, and that is, Joanne and you.
Okay, so, hi, again. This is my 24th year as a paraprofessional certified aide, whatever you want to call it. And some years I have time to collaborate, and some years I don't. Why is it so important? First of all, I get to review ed plans, so I can, I should put my glasses on, so I can become familiar with student goals and accommodations. If I don't have that time at the beginning of the year, I have no time to ever look at an ed plan. I'm basically running in a room, they're telling me who I'm there for, I'm trying to remember, and I don't know what their goals or accommodations are. If I have collaboration time, I can discuss with the general ed teacher what their expectations are. For years, I worked with one or two teachers. I knew their expectations, we worked well together. Now, I'm with anywhere from four to six teachers in a day, and they're not always the same from year to year, and their expectations are different, and what's expected in their classroom is different. If I don't have that collaboration, I have no time to know what's expected of me. We also can discuss current performance of students and what needs to be done that day to catch up a confused student or someone who has been absent. It's time to meet with sped teachers to discuss goals. I'm delivering in-class services to those students at least 50% of the time, in some years, up to 75 or 80% of the time. I need to have knowledge of curriculum, which is always changing, and time to preview it. This year, we have a new math program, a new reading program. I need time to go through it, to look at it, to preview it on a daily basis. If I have to walk into a classroom unprepared, then I am not effective in delivering services to our most vulnerable population. We need time set aside daily in order to collaborate and be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Jane? No? Okay, thank you for that. Do you have any further proposals at this time for ESPs, or are you gonna wait till next?
Sorry, we just want to do one more. I know it's not gonna be very, I apologize. The last one we wanted to do is sort of a, it's already in the teacher one, but we want to kind of match up, is on tuition reimbursement, which is already in the contract, but we're looking for a figure that more accurately represents the current cost of education. And so, Heather, are you there? So Heather can speak to that, sorry.
Hi, Heather. I'm an ESP, that's the one currently, and I, yes, so we were just looking to increase that number, and that it was originally, or currently, $500 per course, and I believe that number was brought about 10 years ago, so obviously, prices on courses have gone up drastically since then, well over, you know, $2,000 per course, and if the ESP on ESP salary is looking to advance their career in education, it is, it is difficult, so we're just looking to increase that to match the teachers' $700.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And, you know, that's not in this proposal, one of our next meetings, we'll give you like the written version.
In writing, so we can just number it, you know, I like to keep a running list of numbered proposals, so, yeah, that would be appreciated. Okay, so that's, that's two items that we did. We have some proposals, would you like us to present them now?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't have enough for all of you, but we can certainly share it electronically after the meeting.
We could, I saw it on, but it had some weird formatting jazz on it.
And I, yeah, sorry. But I'll shoot it to everybody electronically. Oh, okay, yeah, this, I think I made 30 copies, 30?
So, yeah.
They'll share in the room.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
We'll be down. Okay. I just wanted to keep this. How are you guys doing?
I know, I hope we're...
All right, so while we're distributing the actual verbiage, we, I think there could be a couple of themes we could glean from these. One is professionalism, right, that you all obviously adhere to, and we want to align the workdays and duties to that spirit of professionalism. And the other one is, you know, going back to students, making sure students are safe at all times, and supervised at all times. That doesn't encapsulate every one of these, but they are common themes that you may see throughout, and it may touch upon interests that you've already articulated yourselves. So the very first proposal that you see is a, is to lengthen the work year to 184 days, and to have the workday be seven hours. And, of course, because ESPs are hourly, they would be, their compensation would be correspondingly increased, you know, where more, you get paid more. And the seven-hour day and the 184-day work year would allow for such things as, you said, probably at the very beginning of the school year, you may be able to review and get familiar with the plans that any of your students may be educated under, and have collaboration time with the teachers that you're gonna be working with, or the people that write the goals that you're taking part in implementing. So that's, that's really the spirit of proposal number one, is to create pockets of time within the work year and the workday, again, for which your salary would be accordingly adjusted to the, to reflect the hourly rate. Number two, the committee proposes to have the newly hired ESPs, like teachers, be placed on the salary schedule at a step that makes sense, given their applicable experience. It just gives the superintendent more latitude to recognize whatever, you know, skillset they bring into the job, and attract people to come work here, and show off the strength of the school system. Number three, we just want to put the number of pay periods such that we're not prepaying people at a certain point, if Mr. Libby's comfortable explaining what the problem is with that.
Yeah, certain school years, the 21st paycheck of the year, quite often fell early June, it says, and we still had, you know, a week or two, or sometimes more, of school left, and it shows that 21 check-off option had already been compensated for their entire work year. So it's not a practice that's really a sound business practice, to pay someone prior to services being rendered. So it's just something we'd like to get in line with our other bargaining units. Everyone, other 10-month employee units that get paid during the school year are 22 checks, so we're just looking to align that with our other groups.
May I clarify? With still the option of 26, correct? It's 22 or 26, just want to make sure.
At the time, that would be in 21 bytes instead of, I mean, 22 bytes instead of 21.
Same amount, just spread out, a little different, just slightly differently. Proposal number four, we wanted to make sure that we're not having all different start anniversary dates to figure out how many years somebody has worked for longevity purposes. So the anniversary date for purposes of longevity is June 30th. So as of June 30th of the current year, if you've worked at least, or more than 90 school days, you get credit for the whole year, in terms of where you are in the longevity steps, if you will. There's no prorated longevity for partial years' work, it's all, it's a full year or nothing, it's a full payment or nothing. But the flip is, if you get to more than 90 days, if you work 91 days, you get credit for a whole year. So the committee's thinking is, that's, that would be the decent balance, to get people the compensation, but not making an administrative nightmare to figure out, when is your anniversary date? You know, we want it to just be all uniform. And the interest is getting it all aligned with all units across the district.
Yes, and it kind of just aligns with the way, the practice that happens in the business office. We don't, there's a lot of employees, and lining up everybody's individual seniority date is cumbersome in most cases, so we've, the way we've run it, historically, it's June 30th is where, when we calculate longevity for the year, and we give folks credit for that first year, if they've done at least half of the school year. We calculate longevity also based on years of service to the Tewksbury Public Schools in any capacity, so aides changing to teachers, food service switching to aides, food service switching to teachers, it's any capacity in service to the Tewksbury Public Schools counts towards longevity for three years of service, when we calculate longevity. And it's a kind of, across many of our bargaining units, it's a point of confusion, so just want to get it cleaned up, so that everyone's clear on how we calculate that number of years for our purpose.
Number five and six sort of relate to one another, and for that matter, number one relates, they all kind of coordinate. If the work year is going to be 184 days, we propose that the first two days of the ESP work year, or the two days before the students come in, and those two full days for ESPs, like the teachers, would be professional development days, so that during those two days, plus the first student days, a person may not take a personal leave day unless they receive permission and the superintendent agrees to waive the language. If there's an extenuating circumstance, you can apply to the superintendent, who has the discretion to consider and approve. So you'll see that that goes hand-in-hand with the work year that we proposed, and then down below, it also goes along with the workshop and professional development time that we are now proposing that ESPs take part in. So early release workshop days, ESPs would have, would have workshop material tailored to their role, when the teachers are at their early release workshops, there may be times in common, I would imagine, that everybody's in the same workshop. And then, the two PDs at the beginning of the year, and then there's two more full PD days? Four more?
Half-days.
Two full days, four half-days?
Yeah.
I thought there was two more full days.
There's four full days total.
I'm sorry, okay.
And four halfs.
Four full days, four half-days, got it. So ESPs would be taking part in the same amount, if you will, time-wise, of PD and workshop time. And again, because you're hourly, you will, for those extra days, get paid to be here. And then, of course, if there's a rescheduling, perhaps a snow day, for example, the administration would reschedule the canceled days. And we have proposed to remove, because nobody even knows what the heck this is, SARC training. Anybody know what that is or was? As I understand it, it doesn't...
Yes, unfortunately.
But I am, and you're nodding in the back, so...
Yes, I don't remember what SARC stood for, do you?
See, I told you.
What does it stand for?
Subject Area Review Committee.
Okay, subject area, so if you were gathering, the teachers gathered to do this and review things with different subjects, and, right, they had committees?
Yeah.
And if we volunteered, well, it wasn't volunteered, if we were on one of those committees, we would get paid at the teacher's rate.
Yeah.
Yes. There were people that actually took part in that, aides.
So, but doesn't, it doesn't happen anymore. So we're just trying to clean up where we can. And also, we received feedback from principals that ESPs would benefit from attending the monthly faculty meetings at their assigned schools. And again, if it's outside of the seven hours of the day, because it's an hourly employee, you would see your compensation increased accordingly by those hours that you would attend, though. The next section down, I see that you made a proposal about the tuition amount, we'll have a counter for you. And then the one at the very bottom, 3C, we propose to delete because it's now sort of superseded by the language that we just talked about, about early release and PD days. And number seven and eight go hand in hand. Well, the second part of seven. The first part of seven that we propose to strike out that language, it's, instead of being aligned with the student hours, the workday's seven hours, which actually is the hours that the HR precision aide contracted people work that you all proposed to bring back in-house. They have a seven-hour workday. So if we were to be able to meet you on that one, we would propose that everybody have the same. And it would allow us to then implement what we proposed under number eight, which is to have equitable, which incorporates a whole lot of factors, equitable assignment of duties, supervision duties. And there's a few areas where there's some gaps that are sort of concerning right now that we have to fix. And if the superintendent doesn't mind, the bus, breakfast, I can't remember what exactly it is, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's the most vulnerable time for our most vulnerable students, and that's that unstructured time of transitioning in, transitioning out. Definitely, things have changed in our schools with all students and free breakfast. And we've seen and certainly have heard a lot from our principals about that time and the need for increased supervision of students. And those are some that are listed here.
I understand from feedback from our principals that on some occasions, students aren't, they have nobody to escort them to get their breakfast.
And the van and the bus.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, with the HR precision aides having a seven-hour day and them doing that, you know, having that duty, it poses a need. Obviously, we have a lot of students with that transitional coming-to-school-and-leaving need.
Yeah. So we envision it to be doable if the workday is adjusted. Folks are being compensated for that extra time, and that extra time will be dedicated towards duties in some cases and also, like you said, the professional development, which can then, in turn, be used to help folks get more familiar with the students that they're serving, you know, which is a win for everybody. And finally, we just have a housekeeping item where there's some parts of the contract aren't as encompassing as they should be about gender identity inclusivity, so we'll just amend as appropriate. Anybody else have any rationales they want to share? Any questions?
Any questions from anyone on our team?
We need to...
Yeah.
Absolutely. Twenty-five, yeah.
I was wondering, should we just do this many now or should we wait? But we figured, as soon as they're ready, let's present. And if you need time, obviously, to digest, take the time you need. But to get them into your hands as soon as we can.
So we have about 35 minutes left of the ESP session, so I think this may be an appropriate time to caucus.
We both have things to talk about. So with the housekeeping item on the committee side, they actually voted we went to executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is the first.
They voted to go to executive session.
And do we want to, are we 20 minutes or do you want, I know it's a...
Well, sorry, 20 minutes and if one side needs...
A little longer.
Yeah, let's try to come back and just at least figure out what we're going to do in the next meeting.
Exactly.
Do you vote on the two of us?
Yep. This is your debut.
This is weird.
Do you have a...
I have a motion to enter into executive session.
For strategy with the TTA.
To caucus for strategy with the TTA and ESPs specifically.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Here we go. We're going to the garrisons.
All right, we resume our regular session for Subcommittee of Negotiations at 6:02 PM.
All right, so we have spoken. Do you want to make a first call? We don't have any formal responses yet. The team's going to have to meet separately at some point.
We want to talk as a big unit, but we will be getting you responses likely by next meeting.
I am going to, your question about the parental leave, though, we do have an answer for that.
Yeah, okay.
You had asked about whether or not we envisioned the 12 weeks being consecutive. So the answer is no, because if you were in a situation where you are the non-birthing parent and your partner is a birthing parent, you may need to take, say you want to take the initial, like, two weeks off to be with them and help with the transition, and then wait till their parental leave runs out to start the remainder of your time, that's how we envisioned it to be.
Okay.
So that you could, you know, take care, pin you back, extend the time, that kind of thing.
Okay.
So we did not picture the 12 weeks necessarily being taken.
I do want to enter, actually correct myself in another answer to your question. The 180 days, the 12 weeks was included. I was being very, so-
So it's a total opt, a total of opt to 180.
And then the remaining 180, so I was, I was, yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, do you want to just talk briefly?
Yes.
What proposal was it?
It was, which one were you looking for? We just have one more thing, then we'll-
Um, which one was it? Uh, discretion on where it, please. Ah, here we go. Number, oh yes, you are number two. As, so you can imagine that sparked a lot of conversation and, believe me, we, so number two, which would give administration discretion on which step to place people. And you can imagine this sparked a lot of discussion because there's, you know, people saying, wait a second, you know, I've been here three years and I know they're going to hire somebody and, you know, they're going to make more than me. But at the same time, we know there's, it's hard to get, to get employees. We think the best solution would be to give the members a living wage and get a salary that will attract people so that you don't have to kind of do some gimmicks with the salary schedule. Having said that, you know, perhaps we'd be willing to entertain that if we could achieve a living wage for our current members.
That is all we have on our end right now for ESP, like, you know, verbal responses or questions. Anything on your end from our proposals or any last things before we conclude the ESP portion?
I think we're good to transition to the teachers. As you said, we'll have some more feedback and probably counters on the ESP language.
Excellent. Okay, so now we are entering the teachers' unit. I'll assume the chair role again for our end. Before we, before we go into ours, I kind of surmised from the beginning of the meeting, it sounds like you were focused on ESPs this meeting and teacher proposals next meeting. Is that correct?
In general, yes.
Okay. Do you have any proposals at all to, or in that's next meeting?
Not today.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Then, in that case, do we want to hand them our proposals?
Yeah.
I think I'm going to put one.
Ted, do you have one more?
Before we go into ours, I just have two housecleaning requests from the school committee. Next meeting, is there a way for our silent reps, if they could even either move up closer or we could somehow mic the room just because they are having difficulty hearing at times? Would that be okay?
Closer is definitely possible.
Okay.
I will tell you, the, I just had given Gail kind of a, I, not even knowing how many chairs would fit, that sort of thing, just a kind of an idea what the room should look like. We came in, got a little stark air and then go from there.
Excellent. My, that's great. And the second request is, oh, testing. Okay, anyway, so, uh, the second question we just have is, in the future, with any proposals or responses from the school committee, could we just have enough copies for the core members of the team? I think a few members were not able to get any copies of the proposals and such, just the core members.
Yeah, I think I ran off 20 thinking you had 20 core members. I blew that.
No worries. I can, I'll send you that number again, you know.
After today, I can certainly send them to electronically.
Excellent. That's great. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, so we do have some proposals to read to you. We do have more coming next time, but we have these proposals under the theme of the best learning conditions for students and their parents. That's what they're all themed around. And the three of us are going to take our turns going through each proposal, reading them with a very quick rationale. We know we, you know, we all want to get home and such, so we can always discuss this much more in the future. So Emily Noel, I'm going to turn to you for proposal number one.
All right, so proposal number one is about the open house language. So right now, we do two evening open houses throughout the course of the school year. So typically there's like one in the fall and then there's one in the spring. Over time, this is kind of, it hasn't been as productive as they should be. And they don't, they often don't match people's schedules anymore, so we're trying to change them so that families have more opportunities to come in. And also, so staff have the opportunity to kind of go through the kids that they need to in a more productive way. So we are suggesting cutting two days to one being in the center of the year, so it still has enough time to implement changes. And then there being an option for half the day to be essentially like during the day. So you could come in if you wanted to at like noon, right, or whenever the half day, whatever that would be. There would be time for parents to come in during the day. There are parents who work nights, there are parents who have a second job, and so this would maybe accommodate them a little bit better. It would also, a lot of parents do end up coming in for day conferences. If we can't fit you in at night, almost always, people are like, well, can I come in during the day? So maybe this would accommodate them a little bit better. And so making that change, just so it's a little easier.
Any questions on that proposal at all? Yes?
I do, as I'm reading it. So just, Emily, as I'm reading it, I'm hoping I'm hearing the same thing. Schedule a half day, schedule an early release day for children, have some, it looks like a two hour, or the second half of the day is open house, then two more hours after the contract day? Is that how?
Right, yes, there'd be two sections. So you could pick either nighttime or in the afternoon, if it would ever work better for the parent. And then there'd be a break in the, there's a break in there.
A break in the day. Okay, so not two in the half, second half of the school day, then two in the afternoon, but the half, second half of the day and then the evening?
Right.
Okay.
Something like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Proposal number two, I'll take this one. This is for the protecting professional discretion, and this is predominantly with our PLCs. We have a few different changes we're proposing here. We want to erase the collaboration shall mean examination of student work, foreign assesses data, coordinating lessons, review of best professional instructional practice, et cetera, and just instead saying PLC facilitators will use professional judgment regarding what content will be on the agenda of each meeting. No outside agency shall determine the agenda of a PLC. The reason we say this is there is times, and I'm going to speak, you know, from my own experience, where we're making a product that maybe is not relevant to our students or to our best practice of teaching. As an English teacher, I even think right now, a thing we daily may need to talk about, and this is just one example, is such as ChatGPT and AI. And we don't have time to work as a department to really discuss that. That's that first one. And also, you know, our PLC facilitators are trusted employees of the district. Their principals trust in them, and that's why they appointed them to that position. So we feel if they have the content knowledge, they also have the knowledge of what needs their department or teams may need. The next page is deleting the 60 minutes a week and instead changing it to the language, there shall be one student half day each month to account for PLC time. Once students are dismissed and after the designated lunchtime, members shall use the remainder of the workday for PLC. Our rationale here is, it is become, it's become very tough and it's not very effective for our students to squeeze these in in the mornings or afternoons. I can speak from personal experience here. There are numerous times where students will say, well, can I come in at 7:10 tomorrow? Say, no, I can't do that. I'm at PLC. But they have early morning practice or, you know, something with their sibling the other days of the week. So, and maybe at the school, like I said, they may have after-school practice. So it's disadvantageous for students. And the last one is really discussed, first of all, we deleted that part about the 20 school year as we just felt housecleaning that is, that year has passed. But the bold addition, for each school, from pre-kindergarten to fourth grade, there shall be one PLC facilitator per grade level. From grades five to 12, PLC facilitators shall be sorted by subject area. Additionally, there should be one special education PLC facilitator for each building from grades two to eight, one DLC PLC facilitary district-wide, one SLP facilitary district-wide, and one unified arts PLC facilitator for each building. The reason we say this is right now, there are a lot of displaced members who are being assigned to teams, but they're almost kind of sitting in the corner because what's being discussed is not relevant for them. Our unified arts specialists have a very different type of job, as do absolutely the DLC educators in our district. They, at times, are kind of to the side, while maybe if they're, for instance, with, you know, MSNTs, it sometimes is a very different job description and different issues that arise. So those are the changes to that one. Do we have any questions for this one at all?
Can I just, Roseanne, just clarifying, Karen, in the change at the top of page two, the bold where it says there shall be one student half day each month to account for PLC time, so again, roughly, there's usually a half day a month. I know sometimes those half days are used for students, they're used for professional development for, for the units, or for the teacher unit, anyway. Are you suggesting that some of that cut into the professional development time? I just want to make sure.
No, it would not cut into the, it would not come into the already four half allotted days.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Can I have just one question? Just because, and I don't know offhand how many PLC facilitators you have now. How does this change what's in place now? Is there other additional PLC?
There would be a few additional. We had an exact number. I'm not sure if anyone on the team remembers that. I think it was five additional.
I think.
That's a, that's a rough estimate, but yeah, in that ballpark. I'm going to now turn over to Emily Niles for proposal number three.
All right, so this is about K to four prep time. And we start off by taking out the part that says that the unified arts specialist would not necessarily get the consecutive 45 and that theirs could be broken up. We're looking to really push for them to have that 45-minute block as well. And then in the bottom, in the bold, we added, in addition, there will be two student half days a month, not included with the monthly PLC half days, for all K4 educators in order to receive additional preparatory time. So this one just kind of feels like a no-brainer in terms of how it benefits the students because it will add additional inadequate prep time, which provides students with better planned lessons, more thought out, purposeful, hands-on, differentiated, all those things we want. It gives us more time to analyze student data and consult with other staff members, which all allows students to get more specific and individualized and engaging instruction.
And any questions about that one?
Yeah, Roseanne, just another clarifying question. So Emily, just to be clear, I'm just, the way this reads right now, there will be two student half days a month, not included with the one half day that you're proposing in the proposal above it.
Yes.
So you're saying three half days a month for K through four student, for K through four?
Yes, correct. Yep, yes.
Okay. Emily Niles will also take the next one.
All right, so this is the lunch duties for the K12 educators. We are looking to scratch the lunch and recess duty listed at the top, as well as that, I won't read that entire, thank you. However, I guess I should. However, an employee will not be assigned a both morning bus and lunch slash recess duty on the same day, provided that the employer has the authority to assign ESPs and teachers separately to duties. No more than one lunch or recess duty per week. We were looking to get rid of that, as well as the lunch and duty, scratching that and just changing it to bus duty. And then same thing, getting rid of lunch and lunch duty in the next part, and scratching professional staff such as guidance and adjustment counselors and librarians may be assigned in an equitable manner up to two lunch blocks per day, getting rid of that, as well as, except for all unit members shall be assigned one individual student lunch period. So we're looking to scratch those duties because we have found particularly at the K4 level, that doing the lunch and/or recess duty has not necessarily proven to have any additional benefits in any way that's greater than what they already had when the lunch monitors were solely doing the lunch and recess duties. It would be a more beneficial use of time, again, for the students, to have our whole team together for that CPT block. That has been a tough loss this year for us, in order to also consult, let's say, speech, whoever, and just have those better prepped and planned lessons.
Any questions? Just, just to clarify, that's, because I believe this was something new added last contract for K4.
Yep.
This is removing it for all levels.
Yes.
Okay.
And just speaking at the high school, you know, there was a voucher model before that. Okay, going along the way, I'm going to give Emily Noel the transfer language change.
All right, so, I'm going to try not to read this whole thing because it's kind of one paragraph. So we're trying to look at changing a little bit of the process, just to make it clear, make it a little bit more concise. So we're looking to cut presenting, sorry, I am going to end up reading this whole thing, so. Teachers desiring a transfer will submit a written request to the superintendent with a copy of the teacher's principal. It just seems complicated. We've run into issues before where, you know, the contract says submit it this way, but then sometimes on the advertisement, I guess you say, for the job, it'll say, if you're internal, like, do, like, apply this way. And so we're just trying to simplify that a bit by having this like mutually agreed upon process. And then a little further down, we want to add, so these requests for transfers shall be granted to all properly licensed applicants and seniority shall decide who receives a transfer in the event of multiple requests. Because right now, if you're an internal candidate, is very similar to just being an external candidate. You have to go, you're going through the entire process, but you work in the district, you're already like a qualified employee who does well, who has, you know, been around and that kind of thing. All right. Any vacancies that provide an opportunity for transfer shall be posted seven days, essentially in advance, so that internal candidates have like a first dibs kind of thing. So you get to see it before it goes out to the general public. And that's our general, that's essentially the idea. What we're trying to create is an environment where staff feel like they can grow and that if they need to move to a position that better fits where they are now, as opposed to where they were, they can do that. And if they want to, oh, I got this other license, I really want to move to this spot, and one opens up, and I love this district, like, that's awesome, I want to go and do this. So we're trying to create a more secure workforce and also one where people feel like they can grow and develop and be the educators that they need to be for their students.
And I would just add to that also, you know, especially with the seven days before being posted on school spring. I, I know that school spring postings do cost the district money. That could forego that cost for the district to post that if someone did. And along with that, within regards to the change of the mutually agreed and publicized process, that's really just because there's been a lot of confusion over the last few years of how to do it. Instructions are given in a very different way to members than the contract actually calls for. So that way, it's streamlined, makes it easy, no confusion, and it also leaves the prerogative up to the administration on how to post that and with the instructions very clear. Are there any questions regarding that?
So mutually agreed and publicized process. That, I'm wondering, I don't know what, who's mutually agreeing and what's publicized. Is it described below or is that meaning a separate cross?
Mutually agreed would be between the union and administration.
Mutually agreed on how the, how the teachers desiring a transfer will submit a written request to the superintendent via a mutually agreed and publicized process.
So right now, the contract is written in this way, but sometimes it will tell you, like, in the little word- like, in the little word that comes up, it'll be like, "Oh, but apply to this person, apply to this person."
Sure.
And so we just want to make sure that everything matches and that everyone is aware that, like, no, this is the process, this is the way we're doing this.
Is it, can we, for simplification, can't, I'm just wondering whether we can just say, "Teachers desiring a transfer will submit a written request to the superintendent, period." Just write a letter to the superintendent, "I want this transfer."
The thing is, though, that is in, up until now, what's, or recently at least, what's been happening is the instructions posted, the job posting that goes out to all members is different instructions completely, and this has become an area of contention when discussing with, via grievances and such.
Well, maybe we can simply say that teachers desiring a transfer will follow the posted process for the position being advertised.
We would entertain any counter to that.
Yeah, I know, I'm just wondering. I, that doesn't, I don't understand what that language means. That's all.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on. Did you have?
I don't, no. I understand what the intent here is, and I certainly, you know, think we would want to caucus and talk with the administration.
Yeah, and then down below, I, I see that, "The request for transfer shall be granted to all properly licensed applicants, and seniority shall decide who receives a transfer in the case of multiple requests." So again, properly, if you're properly licensed, you will receive the transfer. Is that what you mean to say?
Exactly.
So what if we like you in your present job? And we don't want to transfer you because we like where you are and you're successful?
Well, then, I would say it's hindering the educator from growing, and the educator has moved on to want to do a different thing. We've lost educators who have gone to other districts because they didn't get the transfers granted here.
Yeah. Okay. And then seniority breaks the tie?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then vacancies shall be posted for seven school days. Okay, and go back. Case, turn up with her. Okay. All right, I understand.
Excellent.
I now understand. Anybody have any questions on this? We will receive the next proposal. Thank you.
Okay. The next two are just simply members of our unit that don't actually have any working conditions in Article Eight. I know in some joint labor management, we've talked and alluded to us proposing just some sort of, you know, job descriptions of these people in the contract. So the first one is our district-wide academic coaches and their working conditions. I think you're all going to see, aside from a few things, it's not terribly much different than what's happening, but for the sake of confusion, for the sake to avoid confusion on our members' end, along with administration's end, we have the following, and it's all, it would all be new, and it would be a new Section 10, Article Eight. Academic district coaches are unit members that shall be scheduled to work in the following working conditions. District-wide academic coaches will generally consist of literacy, math, and technology coaches. The coach role is based on flexibility of schedules. Flexibility allows coaches to meet with teachers as needed and support administrator needs. Supervision and evaluations are completed by the appropriate director. Academic coaches shall work an average of seven-hour days per week, and their work shall not exceed 35 hours per week. Academic coaches shall be afforded a 25-minute duty-free lunch during the day. Academic coaches shall attend meetings that are out of the regular school day. These out-of-hour meetings shall be factored into their 35-hour work week. The only time these out-of-work hour meetings shall exceed the allotted 35 hours is for the one hour, extra hour of time that is expected of all members of this collective bargaining agreement. Such meetings can be for the following: attending PLC meetings for different groups in the Tewksbury District, attending school committee meetings, any other meetings deemed necessary by academic coaches. Coaches shall facilitate professional development trainings over the summer that shall pay $50 per hour as the district requires. Coaches shall collaborate in the classroom, with the classroom teacher. Coaches shall not be required to be in the room when a substitute is in the room. In the event that this provision in Section 10 is in conflict with any other provisions of Article Eight concerning working conditions for the academic coaches, the provision of this section shall prevail. Do we have any questions regarding our somewhat new academic coaches?
Can, can you just clarify? You mentioned that a lot of this is kind of already in practice, I think, if I understood you correctly, and this is sort of to memorialize some of it. Can, for my benefit, as someone that doesn't actually work in the school district, can you just maybe point out maybe the things that are?
I'm not going to lie to you. I, myself, may be a bit ignorant for that, so I can get you those answers.
That's fair.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk with them, though.
Okay.
Excellent.
I just had one question.
Sorry.
I didn't notice the extended hour of the week. Is that, where is that in here?
I think that's what.
That's under, that's under the letter F.
Yes.
The extended hour. So that, so I say that aside from the 35 hours, there'll be an extended hour, which is the equivalent of the extra help hour that educators, other educators in the operation do.
Okay, so the, the?
So it's equitable, yeah.
It's for the one extra hour of time that is, okay.
There is, may just look different.
That's the extended one, okay. Thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay. The next one is student learning provider working conditions. I apologize for the, I should have bolded all of this because it's all new, so pretend it's bold. Section 12 would be new. Unit members employed as speech and language pathologists shall be scheduled to work in accordance with the following work conditions. A, SLPs will be responsible for planning and implementing speech and language plans for students on their caseloads. Additionally, SLPs will be responsible for supplying speech and language testing for IEPs. Each SLP will receive one preparation block per day. Each SLP will receive two additional blocks per week for the use of testing in IEP meetings. Building administrators will be responsible for scheduling and implementing the coverage needed. Any student sessions that are canceled due to an assigned meeting by an administrator will not be the responsibility of the SLP to make up. Are there any questions with that?
No.
I just have a concern about D being a compliance issue with IDEA. If it's not made up.
I'm sorry, I'm looking, which letter, I'm sorry?
12D. It says, "Student sessions that are canceled due to an assigned meeting by administrator will not be the responsibility of the SLP to make up."
Right, they, that would be made up by, I would assume, the person's appropriate role who makes those meetings. It's not canceling the meeting completely. They, I think there are rationale there, and Josh, I know you worked with them, would you want to explain their rationale? I think I know it, but I want you to say it because you worked with them.
Yeah, I, I think what's been happening is they've been assigned to go to certain meetings that then they have to make up some things on their caseload, and they're concerned that it's creating a backlog for them, and they already have high numbers as it is. So the concern is these meetings are kind of cutting into their ability to do things within the contractual time limit. So in this particular case, I, I don't know how the district would make up that time. I, I can't insinuate how, how they would do that, but nonetheless, if, if a student session is being canceled due to an assigned meeting by an administrator, we, we feel that the SLP shouldn't be punished by having to stay late or come early or something along those lines. I think, I think that's kind of the, and I mean, punished might be a harsh word there, but, I mean, they have, they have families at home, they have, they have their own kids, they have their own lives, and I think it's, I think it's fair to, to respect that time.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for that one? The rationale for both those in regards to student learning is it just makes it clear what these educators are meant to do for our students and their respective families. Proposal number eight, I'm going to talk again, class size. Under Article Eight, we are adding, the district, whenever possible, shall maintain class sizes of 20 students or fewer for grades up to fourth grade for classes, and 25 students or fewer for classes five to 12. Speaking of this, I can say that, especially as a high school educator with inclusion classes, when classes exceed 25, especially with inclusion classes, students get completely, sometimes, they become, they, they're left in the corner, they're left, it's hard, they're not going to self-advocate, some of them don't have those skills developed yet, and with so many students and one teacher and maybe an ESP in the room, it can be really hard to ensure that those students succeed in the classroom. Do you want to speak very quickly, just about elementary with 20, the rationale?
Yeah, I mean, I've had classes of anywhere from 16 to 22, and there is a monumental difference between 20 and 22 kids, particularly nowadays, where we all know that our groups of children are more diverse and there's a lot more needs, and particularly with our new special education model, where everyone is now everywhere, there's no, you know, one specific or two specific classrooms. So those class sizes are, are critical, really, to small group work and everything at those ages.
Any questions regarding this proposal? All right. I will now turn it over to Emily Noel regarding proposal number nine.
Okay. So as the general special education population has, has grown, it's become tricky to fit in testing time and meeting time and teaching students' time for special educators. So we are looking to add in time just for special education teachers to test. So with this, so it says, "Special education educators in K-8 schools who conduct required student evaluation," so that would be things like academic testing, or if you need like a specific reading test, specific something test. "Within the 30-day IEP testing window, would receive a 45-minute duty-free block of time per student evaluation. The administration would provide coverage or otherwise make necessary logistical arrangements to provide for the 45 minutes of duty-free time. Additionally, educators in 9 through 12 schools shall be afforded transition liaison collaborative support blocks." So that's essentially the same idea, just call it something different. Works all differently at the high school. This time is key to being able to meet the basic logistics of making the IEPs happen. There's a formal process, especially with the new IEPs coming out, which are longer, right? The testing that has to take place, writing them, the data collection, attending the meetings, talking to the specialist teachers, talking to the academic teachers, making sure everybody's had their input, making sure everything's been, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, all those types of things. It requires time, and right now, there's a lot of special education teachers who are running around rapidly trying to make sure that all of this is done. So if they at least had one 45-minute set, where they were like, "All right, this is where I'm going to get blah, 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 done for this one child," it would alleviate some of that, without them having to coordinate with a thousand people, like, "When can I pull to do X, Y, and Z, or when can I just sit down and do this?" So that's why we're asking for specific prep time just for that group of teachers.
Any questions from anyone? Okay.
I'm sorry, Karen, could you speak to the last part where you said additionally every March?
Oh, so, or can I, or did you want to do it?
I mean, I can do it too, but it's, it's in here today, no?
No, sure.
Go ahead.
So, um, sorry, hold on a second. I got a question.
So I can, I can start this and add to what you were going to say. So a practice that had happened many years ago for quite some time was when students go from Heathbrook to, I guess now Center School, but at that point, you know, Trey Hand, and then next to next, and next to next, special educators were able to meet to talk about the students going up to the next level. That way, they were able to orient students with the needs that they may have, what's going on, any important things and such. That, over time, was, became, no longer became a practice, but the special educators really feel, you know, that that has kind of shaken up the continuity of how students on IEPs go through Tewksbury Public Schools.
Essentially, right now, educate, like, so I'm in a transition grade, right, so they switch buildings to come into the seventh grade. I get just a stack of IEPs. This is what we get. We have the occasional, like, a behavioralist or somebody who might go between buildings, and if you so happen to notice that service on the first day, you could be, "Oh, hey, can you tell me something about this kid?" But there's no real time to sit down and go through and say, "All right, you have so-and-so. I know the IEP says this, you know, this is a great reward system for them, this is a great something for them, you know, they have real problems with transitions, oh, they love animal, anything with animals." These types of things matter, and it helps save time at the beginning of the year when we're trying to figure out who these kids are in front of us. Having any and all information is useful. And the IEP is good, but it's very formalized. It doesn't have a lot of those, like, nuanced things about kids. And it is something that used to happen, it used to take place. And we are a district, it's, it's better now with the Center School, but we are a district with a lot of transitions, building to building. So it would be hugely beneficial for there to be a time, we imagined during March, just because that made sense during the school year, for there to be time, maybe as a PD day, or maybe as a different type of allotment, whatever the district feels, so that they can get together at a building and sit down and talk about those kids.
Excellent.
So if you had a second-grade teacher who is not only, you know, concerned with their student moving on to third grade, but also concerned with the student they're getting from first grade, it would, would it all be within this two hours, or would it be?
For the MSNTs.
For the MSNTs.
For the MSNTs, exactly, yeah. Not the, not the, yeah, not the great, the great little teachers.
Thank you. I have a question before you move on.
Yes.
And you may have just answered it. When you, what, who is included as a special education educator?
We were picturing it being the MSNTs.
MSNTs.
Maybe case managers, if that's useful, but mostly the MSNTs.
And DLCs.
The liaison.
And the what?
The liaison.
Yeah, yeah.
Do they, do they have class rosters? Okay. Do they have a prep every day? Okay.
Common, in some, you know, as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
I'm going to now give proposal 10 over to Emily Niles.
All right, so this is student passing time, and we, this is a new one. We add in, "School periods will include a reasonable period of time in between periods for staff and students to move between locations." Simply, right now, students are losing out, particularly K-4, on their specialist time, and their specialist happens once a week, and right now, it's a 45-minute block. They're losing anywhere between five and like 12 minutes, it could go as high as, because of the lack of transition time. And again, they only get to go there once a week. So simply, it's impossible, both mathematically and physically, to end one class, say, at 11 o'clock, and start another class at 11 o'clock. Or end the class at 11 o'clock and get them to their 25-minute lunch, you know, as quickly as possible. They're losing time on both ends. And there's just, there's a plethora of reasons why this is difficult. I won't dive too deep, but just anything regarding behavior or incidents, bathroom issues, prep time, they all come into play with this, this little lack of kind of a transition period. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Emily, did you want to add from the middle school?
So the same, it's, it's similar at the middle school level, because we also don't have transition time built in. So there's, there is a bit of disconnect. Some people will let their kids out two minutes early because they don't want their kids to be late for their next block, whereas somebody else says, "Oh, I'm keeping you right to the minute because I don't want you hanging out in the hallway," or something like that. So this creates this kind of like off-time shifting. And also, movement happens, and it's not being taken into account in the scheduling. So they're not, as Niles said, you're not capable of, like, learning math and ELA within the same, like, 8:30 minute, like, that doesn't happen. So this would better reflect what's actually happening in the buildings, and it makes it a lot easier for the older grades to be like, "You're late for class, you're on time, this is great," something like that. It would just help with consistency, and then students also know, "Oh, okay, I'm not late," or "I am," because right now, there's also some panic amongst some kids when they're not, but you can't be in two places at once, so.
I would all, and for, an FAQ I expect is, with high school, it doesn't change our practice, we have the transition time. It would just memorialize that for us. But I would also, for student benefit, if they had this practice of transition time, especially the five-to-eight model, we do have students that really struggle to get to class on time. They are in the hall for minutes, minutes and minutes after the bell rings. This could teach them earlier on the discipline of their, you know, the consequences of what happens when you choose to be in the hallway for much longer, and that way, it'd be more consistent practice for four extra years as they start fifth grade, or even seventh grade at that, yeah. So, any questions with that one?
Just to clarity, so I get the five through eight because I know that the students are transitioning from within a team typically. At the K-4 level, Emily, are you specifically referring to the transition to outside of the classroom, i.e. a specialist lunch, whatever, or are you referring to specifically, hey, we're going from English to math, math to spelling, with all, which is all in the same room?
For us, it would specifically be the specialist, because that, yeah, because the, the ELA, the math we're doing in our classrooms, we're just transitioning.
Yeah, it's just, okay.
So it'd be particularly for specialists because that's what they're losing out on the most time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for anyone?
That's clear.
Okay. Going on to the next one, safe, all right, yeah, proposal 11, safe and appropriate learning environment, I'm going to give that to Emily Noel.
All right, we're going to switch, okay. So there are certain things that make a school much more, not just comfortable for students and faculty, but make it a safer, more inviting, more welcoming place to be. And so, we wanted to make sure that our students always had access to these things. We know that some of the buildings are older. We know that some things are complicated to put in and take a lot of planning. But we're serving, we're serving a lot of kids, and we want that to keep growing, and we want them to be able to be in the best place possible to learn every day. And so, we have, in order to have appropriate teaching and learning environments for educators and students, all learning spaces still have appropriate temperatures that are conducive to teaching and, teaching and learning. I can tell you, right now, my room fluctuates between like 55 to like 78. Just depends on the day and what's happening with the system. Prior to the start of the '25-'26 school year, all rooms that are occupied by educators and students shall be equipped with functional air conditioning. Prior to the '25-'26 school year, all spaces occupied by students and educators shall have functioning Wi-Fi, internet access, cellphone data service in case of emergencies. It's sporadic at the buildings, where you are, if you can call out, if you can't, if you get reception, that can be very dangerous. I know we've done a lot of Wi-Fi upgrading in the last couple of years, but making sure that students have access to that consistently, no matter where they are, the devices they're using, all those types of things, just helps make everything much more fluid. If they don't have to worry about standing, where can my laptop get the best signal, it helps significantly, let me tell you.
To add to that, just very quickly, you know, the, the public schools have done a great job moving in this direction already, but there still are many rooms. And as the years go on, it's no longer, you just got to stick out that first week of school of the sweaty and, you know, disengagement. It now goes into late September, and it's, and even, yes, sometimes October, and it's really hard sometimes to make routines that matter and are effective for our students when they're dysregulated because they are just sweltering, or even sometimes, you know, freezing. So, ready? Any questions about that?
No questions.
The next one is just simply adding for the half-days, the day before December vacation. The reason why, we, some years we have that, some years we don't. But the fact of the matter is, that day for families, sometimes it'd be very hard to make that full day. I remember a few years ago, we had a full day on December 23rd. Our attendance was extremely low, and it just made a day of not much student learning at all, and just high absenteeism. This would just be good for family planning before they go. Obviously, the district has the prerogative to get as close to the holiday, and they've exerted that practice before. But for a full day the day before, it just isn't necessarily conducive to student learning, and also, it's stressful for our families, parents, and students. Any questions? All right, I'll turn this last one to Ted.
Oh, president release time. The president's association shall be relieved of point two of their teaching schedule. The logistics of this release time will be coordinated by the association president and their building principal. In a nutshell, and I work with a lot of districts, part of my job, and when the president has release time, that affords greater opportunities, like, they can meet with the administration, and ideally, kind of nip issues in the bud before they elevate. When, when the president is working full-time, doesn't have any release, it's, and this is the case now, it's tough to find that, that time to meet with the administration. And those meetings are kind of often harried. So, this would carve out some time to allow administration and the union president to address issues, and give the union president kind of sufficient time to, to meet with members and do a little investigation with, without it weighing on the very important day job that the union president has to do.
Any questions?
No.
Nope. Clear. A lot of proposals, you know? And you probably, you probably would like time to discuss, unless there's any major comments or questions you would like to make right now before you caucus.
Well, just do our caucus, and then it may take a bit.
That's okay, just, you know, let it, give me a 10-minute warning when you guys feel ready, okay?
But we definitely probably should come back and reconvene and talk about that.
Absolutely, yes, yes, 10-minute warning. But yeah, we'll do, any estimate at all?
Say 30 minutes.
Yeah, 30 minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
20, thank you.
You have to vote, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm in favor. Motion, motion to adjourn for executive session.
And I agree.
And I agree. We're in favor.
See you back.
the school committee at 7:29. So I'd like to resume by just making a couple of observations about the proposals. We don't have any official counters or whatever, but we just have a couple of observations. The administrators, we were able to talk this with our silent reps, and their take on the teacher's presence in the lunchroom was a very different take than what we heard from you all. They were of the mind that the teacher's presence in the lunchroom is hugely beneficial, hugely beneficial. They're able to help and be a resource to monitors in helping with, you know, potentially problematic situations and conflicts that may happen with kiddos in unstructured times. And it also, they felt strongly that it gives teachers a very sound basis of knowledge when they're speaking with parents about how the kiddo is doing. They can say that I've seen with my own eyes, for example, that your child has grown tremendously in their ability to navigate conflicts in unstructured settings. Things like that are just so meaningful when they come from a person who actually saw with their own eyes things that are going on in those unstructured situations that are really important to a kid's day, you know? So I just want to tell you that the perspective I heard was just, was different, you know? They really want you there. They think your skill and your dedication and your, just your deep knowledge of the children is hugely helpful. So that's one observation. The other one is the time on learning issue that the folks on my team are a little concerned about, presented by the totality of the proposals we had today. Understood that people want more time to collaborate and think about and carefully approach how they instruct kids, but we do have to think about the Department of Ed's requirements about how many hours students spend in instruction. And the more time you release kids and if you build in passing time between classes, that's cutting into time on learning, which we have to keep an eye on. So just know that. When we come back with counters or responses, we're not just being jerks when we say, sorry, we can't really do that because we need to honor instructional time, you know? So those are just the two observations.
Could I just respond to the last second one?
Sure.
I just want to say, you know, there are a lot of districts that do at times have weekly half-days in the state of Massachusetts.
My kids.
Bill Ricker has a model for the elementary educators, but I understand that. I just hope you consider all of that when you make your final counter.
No, thank you for pointing those districts out. We can look at those.
Also to the point on...
Do you mind handing Peter the microphone?
Oh, yeah.
We didn't hear from the back row much today.
Also to the point on time on learning, I think our team adequately gave testimony to the fact that they're not learning because they're passing. They're actually passing during the time that the district is counting as learning. They're moving. And to adequately reflect that movement, it should be built in.
Okay. Good, fair point.
So the only thing I would maybe just say to that is I don't disagree with what Mr. Malloy is stating, but that potentially raises a question or concern about having to extend the student day to meet that requirement to that point. So anyway, that's just something that we have to consider and think about.
Making all the pieces fit.
Yeah.
It's always the job. Okay. So do you all have...
I just had a couple clarifications for you guys.
And I have a clarification also.
Thank you.
One of them is regarding your question about the addition of the PLC facilitators. So it comes out to seven, however, at the center elementary, they've just lost three because of the combining of two schools for three grades. Now three are cut back. So it's a net add of four.
Good, thank you.
And then the others, oh, and then the other one was regarding, kind of going back to that passing time, just another clarification for the center school is that I said that the students only see these specialists once a week. That's actually false at the center school because there are a six-day rotation. And then if there's no school one day or something, they're really not seeing those specialists.
Yep.
Six-day rotation.
Yeah. Good. And then you had a...
Yes, regarding the question of the academic coaches.
Yeah.
They reviewed it. The change, the only change from the otherwise working is going to be memorialized is the $50 in the summer. We find their work to be specialized. We have the $34.57, but they're specialized workers and their skill is appreciated. That's why we came to the 50. They're still reviewing. We might add another letter to that. We're not too sure yet, but in the next meeting. But that's, I want to clarify that question, Rich.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a good segue to my next order of business.
Yes.
So the next meeting, we're on the 23rd, and that, we, that's the last day we can each submit proposals, right?
Agreed.
Okay. All right. And then we'll have to pick another meeting date so that we have a two ahead of us, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have that in the ground rules or are we just agreeing to do that?
I think...
Whatever the case.
We have two ahead of us, yeah.
Two ahead, yeah.
So we have a big team. We kind of, we're going to do a little system here, especially based off, obviously Ted's availability is, you know, paramount to us. So do you want, do you have any dates that you would like to throw at us or any date ranges that...
I think we, our team has all agreed that February 8th or the 15th would work for our next date.
Yeah.
Either the 15th or 10th.
So we have two, just as, you know, not both, but those two would work as choice.
You're just going to check in, then we'll check with our team.
Thursday, the 8th or Thursday, the 15th, both worked.
Thursday, the 15th, I can, not the 8th.
Thursday, the 15th.
Look at that. When's JLM? Just curious, when's JLM that move?
We can, that's probably easier to move than this. But I would assume it's earlier than that, Emily? Can, it's probably, could be the first. Yes, it is the first.
Okay. February 8th, or 15th, rather, could work for us.
Okay. All right. So...
Okay.
Same time?
Same time.
Yeah, 4:00 to 7:00?
4:30 to 7:40?
4:30 to 7:40, yes, right. Okay. So I think we had agreed to sort of sketch out kind of a very loose agenda for the next meeting. So we plan, as I said, for the ESP session to probably have one more or two more proposals. We will respond to yours. And so for the, that session, what are your plans for you?
For January 23rd, we plan to respond to yours. We think, I think we have a few, two to three more for ESPs. For teachers, we'll await your response to our first, and we do have a few more on our end.
Okay. And we'll have, all right, so that'll be a nice jam-packed...
I know, we have a jam-packed meeting. But we got, yeah, exactly, so.
Sure.
And then we'll also, any responses to comment proposals too are welcome also, so.
Okay.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Well, thank you all.
Yeah, 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 I just...
What was the meeting?
Yeah, I just maybe want to just add one final point from my end. So again, you know, and for the rest of the folks up here, you know, maybe Lori, I guess, maybe was probably the only one that wasn't, that didn't go through this process, at least for Tewksbury anyway, last go around. So I just want to commend you guys on the professionalism and, you know, really just sitting here, listening and hearing some of the thoughts from our perspective, obviously trying to listen to the things from your perspective. I appreciate some of the information and some of the rationales for some of this. And I think at the end of the day, I think we are all trying to get to the right solutions. Sometimes we may look at it a little differently, but I think at the end of the day, I think our hearts are in all the right place. So I appreciate the efforts that you guys are making on your end.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you so much.
Is there a motion?
7:38 PM. Thank you, Jason.